Okay, ladies and gentlemen, members of the audience, thank you very much for coming to today's council meeting. We are recording this and it is going out live, but we are having problems with the audio again, as Richard has pointed out several times. But this will be put out again as something you can watch back later on as well as live. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Right, without further ado, we'll start the agenda. To note, apologies about excuses.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we've got apologies from councillors, Anthony Hawkins, Ecton and Bradley.
Thank you very much. And the next on is to receive declarations of interest.
Okay. Brockstow, Allesa and Hemlock.
Thank you. And also, Sue.
Same as David, Brockstow and Liberty Leisure.
Right.
Chair.
Yes.
I'm also happy to declare an interest in Brockstow and also there is allotments coming up, I think, on the agenda.
Yes, they are, thank you very much, and also John about that. Thank you very much. Right, if nobody else has had, yes, Tim.
Mr Mayor, I don't know if it's necessary, but it's probably good practice to mention that I've been contacted and it may be positive as lobbying on the allotments issue.
That's fine.
Oh, that's the same.
That's fine, anybody else with, that's fine, that's fine, anybody else? Right, anybody who's been there, we understand, thank you very much.
I better actually say then I have been contacted about item nine as well.
Item nine, yes, that's no problem. Okey dokey. Now, item number four is minutes of committee and advisory committees to note draft minutes, my apologies. Item three, minutes of previous meetings, confirm and sign the minutes in the following meetings set a correct record, A 23 July 2021 and B 20 August 2021. Yes, Tim.
Mr Mayor, 3A, the 23rd of July meeting. I corrected the previous meetings or the previous minutes, or attempted to, by stating that I never made a declaration of interest. I'm not happy at all that this correction now requires a correction. It says in here that I asked to withdraw my declaration of interest, but I actually never made it. What I also said at the time, in my friend and colleague councillor McCrae's absence from that meeting, was that he also did not make a declaration of interest at the previous one, and that that was recorded inaccurately as well. So I'd please like that to be corrected and disappointed that it's now a correction of a correction. Furthermore, there's an item in here that also refers to me and says that I requested to be removed from the planning committee and this needed to be deleted from the list of appendix to the minutes. I made the, that was again a correction and therefore should have been corrected rather than minuted for review this time. I don't want it to appear to the public like I'm just chopping and changing my mind all the time, when actually it was, I was just simply doing what's right for that item on the agenda and correcting the minutes.
I'm going to pass it straight over to Sabrina, because this is her expertise.
Yeah, I think to the first item, that's not why I wanted to talk from what you said the last time, so that's fine, I can change that.
Thank you.
The planning committee, that's, perhaps it's not worded well enough, but that's what I meant, because you'd said apparently at the main meeting, I think it was, you didn't want to be on the planning committee and that's what this was meant to mean so much, because it means that you were changing your mind.
If that was, if that was your, would you mind then, Town Clerk, please, just making that clearer, so that it doesn't look like I'm just chopping and changing all the time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, we'll go to Pip and then over to Ross.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Under minutes and committees and advisory committees, we've got at F, Arts, Events and Heritage, 5th of July.
Can we just stop to number three, please, we're still on number three, we haven't gone on to number four yet. I will come back to you straight away when we get to number four, I promise. But we're stopping on number three at the moment.
Do you need absolutely 19, 21, F on the current minutes that we're looking at?
For number four, which is minutes of committees and advisory committees. Number three is minutes of previous meetings, number four is minutes of committees and advisory committees.
We're currently looking at the minutes of the meeting held on the 23rd of July.
I am looking at that, yes.
My apologies, I'm in the wrong, please continue.
So it's item 19, 2021.
Yep.
Minutes of committees and advisory committees.
Yes.
Under F, Arts, Events and Heritage Committee of the 5th of July. It says that it was resolved that the minutes of HR and Policy Review held on the 5th of July be noted.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Pip, I wanted to apologize for being wrong. We'll go over to Ross and then over... To Richard, Ross.
Are we, are we just talking about the 23rd of July, are we talking about 20?
Just the 23rd of July.
Okay, thank you. And Richard?
Yeah, I thought we was doing both sets together as well, by the way you explained it, so am I right to speak about 20 on part B, 20th of August?
Can we leave it after?
Yeah, okay, sorry, yeah, of course you can.
Yeah. Right, so obviously we're going to have to make some changes to that, so...
Well, we can increase the number of changes now, now that you're on the other page.
So with the change put over, will that have a, right, we'll do Richard first and seconds? That'll do, Tim, thank you, Richard, thank you, Tim, all in favour? All against? All opposed?
Abstain.
Sorry, my apologies. Right, and now we'll get on to number B, 20 of August, 2021, Richard, you asked first, over.
Yeah, I know, obviously, at the beginning, first, I did declare an interest as part of Brockstow Council, because I'm a substitute on the planning committee. But when we did actually go to the vote, which is the last item, 28, 2021, I did actually ask if it could be written down that the reason I abstained is because I'm on the planning committee, because I didn't want people thinking I just abstained to be awkward, because, you know, perhaps I have been in the past. But I just wanted people to know that I was abstaining for the reason that I'm on planning at Brockstow, just in case they got called up there and it's not on there, so thank you.
You wanted to record the vote, so you wouldn't be called that anyway.
But I did request it and I'm sure that if any councillor asks for it to be noted, it should be, and I did make that request.
You didn't ask for a vote, you asked for...
No, I didn't ask for a vote, I asked for the way I voted to be written down, that's what I did ask for, I remember clearly asking for it.
Ross? I was at the meeting. Although, I was late, which I think is why I...
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you. Right, with the corrections made, the leaves be made, now have a proposal for this. Second. Thank you, Ross, thank you, Sue, all in favour? All the others? All abstaining? Thank you very much. Right, number four, minutes of committees and advisory committees. To note the draft meeting in the following, Arts, Events and Heritage Committee, 6th, 21. Ten would be happy to stay. So can I propose minutes, please? Secondary, so proposes, three, second is Ross, we'll be bringing this on, all in favour? All against? All abstaining? Thank you very much. Right. Now, item five. Normally this time, we allow 15 minutes for people to speak, but we'd like to hear what you've got to speak. So I'm going to extend this to 30 minutes. We'll all get three minutes to speak per person on this, anything you must bring up here. Now, normally, again, if you're from Brankirk, we wouldn't be covered, but again, we want to hear what you say. So again, you'll be welcome to speak as well. So if you have anything to say, members of the public, please can you stand forward?
Yes, I'm always forward, is it not only living in Brankirk, but is any of the public here who work on our council, we represent them?
Yes, 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 yes.
They're truly represented.
Thank you very much. Has anybody got anything to say? Okay, then. Moving on. Item number six, town mayor's suggestions. Now, I've been to quite a few, I really enjoyed these. Some that other councillors told me about, that you would go and do, and I've got some that I'm looking forward to going to see, including the Hemlock Rocks. And I was invited by Sharon Hands to go and watch an installation of the bleed kit that she raised money for, which I was really impressed with. I don't know much about the bleed kits, but by the time I'd finished, I knew quite a lot about the bleed kits. They're a fantastic piece of kit, along with the defibrillators that are in the area as well. And they should both be commended for all involved raising money for either of those. And again, I've been asked to attend to the Macmillan's Coffee Morning, having lost two friends of mine to cancer this year and last year. It's one event I will be really looking forward to going to and I will always support Macmillan, they do a fantastic job. And thank you for the invites. If you look on the sheets as well, you'll notice other invites that I've attended, including the favourite one so far, the Half Tall Flat at length, which was the garden competitions. I went to Munro's to open the coffee shop there and they're a fantastic people. They've taken the opportunity to open the store here and they want to really engage with the public and also with the council and community, which we have to back up and we have to encourage, because I think the more people that help us all the way through on all levels is fantastic. He's even talked about possibly looking at opening a boxing, some sort of boxing, maybe he's done before at the country, for people that are troubled, to help them, put their aggression into that and also deal with their anger and aggression, rather than taking it out with gangs and things like that. And I think something like that needs to be carefully looked at. I don't know much about it, I'm the first to say that, but it's something he spoke to me great length about. And it's so wonderful to me, the good people's state of mind, being the garden competitions, the bleed kits, the other events I've been to, the events that I've yet still to go to, he says looking forward to them at the moment. Please bear with me a second. There we go, yes. Right, thank you very much for coming. We've opened Munro's, we've visited to inspect the water park, we see town square flower beds. Special mention to John that he knows more about flowers than I think any of us put here. And he's really done the best in making sure that the bed there blossoms for everybody who uses that square, from the combined services to ourselves, to the markets, et cetera. His leadership has been brilliant in that. The annual Borough Town Council parish meeting is obviously item, there's a garden competition which I spoke, sustainable state preferred. Again, a fantastic event, something I'm very interested in. And again, thanks to Theresa and others who worked so hard and so diligently to do that. Again, talked to Mithen Legends at Stapford, I was invited to, where I met Frank Up, a fantastic person, Richard's met as well, who knows so much about the Mithen Legends of Stapfordford in Nottinghamshire. And as I said to Richard at the time, I had no idea that the Hemlock Stone isn't the original name of it. It was just known as Hemlock Stone, like sandstone, et cetera. And it was known as a different name and I'm really sorry, I can't remember what it's called. But hopefully we can find more out about that later, but it just goes to show how much it changes in history. We did the afternoon tea with town mayor and a charity fundraising event that was fun. I enjoyed it and it was great to see so many people coming to attend. And everybody that did the pre-pees, et cetera, and afternoon teas, well done. You did a fantastic job and thank you, everybody, for attending. It was wonderful, apart from me, you're welcome to eat, thank you. And also, as I said, I'm looking forward to Hemlock Rocks and also the Macmillan Coffee Morning. I've got a full itinerary for there and all I can do is thank everybody who's invited the town mayor. And it's very honourable to represent the council, thank you very much. Right.
Simon.
Yes.
Mr Mayor, may I ask a question about one of the events?
Of course you can.
It was the sustainable Stapford event, I think I mentioned it, well, I did mention it in the Arts, Events and Heritage Committee. It's surprised, by the way, that it's been, I won't say minuted, but recorded on this, that it mentions the, that you attended the Carnegie Centre.
Yes.
But there were actually four venues.
As I explained before, I am disabled and I was in a lot of pain. The only place I could come to sensibly and safely was this centre. If I'd have come around to all of them, I would have done. Limited to what I can do, it's only here. Yes, we'll just go to Pip, then over to you. Right.
Might I ask if you invited the deputy mayor? If you were feeling ill?
The deputy mayor was there in attendance, yes. She was there in attendance at the moment, my mistake, no, she wasn't. I was there in attendance, as I was required to do, I'm just going to go straight over to the deputy mayor now.
I was just going to say that in future, if something like that occurred, then I would be, wasn't happy.
Yeah, I'll take that.
For my, my weight, as I did at the afternoon tea.
And that was absolutely fantastic, I really helped her.
So I'm, you know, I'm, that's part of my role, I assume.
Indeed. As I said, for sustainable Stapford, it was decided that I'd naturally wait here, because it was easy for everyone to come to. Yes, Tim.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just... I think that, I think that one of these probably doesn't belong on this list, because, and incidentally, you know, before I seem judgmental yet again, I thank you for this, because you'll remember that I did take on bridge at the last meeting, that there wasn't a list of mayors events and obviously the mayor is a pivotal focal point and front face of this council. So it is really important that us, as the other members of this council, get to know what our public presence is in the body of yourself or whoever's carrying the chains. I think that's really important to keep and thank you for bringing it back for this meeting. The annual Borough Parish and Town meeting, that isn't a mayoral event. That is an event that the borough invites representatives, it suggests representatives, but it can be any delegate from all of the parishes and towns within Brockstow Borough area. And it doesn't make a point of inviting mayors. So therefore, I'm glad that you attended, but I think it would be factually correct to say that you attended as councillor Simon Frost, not as the mayor, so probably doesn't belong on this list.
I'm just going to pass over to Sabrina, please.
I added to the list because he is the mayor and he runs the town council, so I think the Borough puts listening meetings and things on their list, they've got overheads mayor in Brockstow, so I think it's probably would fit to go on this list for Anne Mayr going to the listening meeting as well.
Right, well, may I ask in the future that we use the, you know, the definition of whether we're talking about the office of the mayor or the person that currently wears the chain carefully in the future? Because this could cause incidents, of course. The reason the borough doesn't make a formal invitation to invite the mayor of places, because not town councils, of which there are, there are three, there is only, Kimberley doesn't have a mayor, it has a chair. Eastwood has a mayor. There are other parishes, such as Griesley, that have a chair but not a mayor. And I know that Brockstow isn't in the habit of giving preferential treatment now. So I think because you attended without the chain on and because the invitation was for delegates from the town council, not for mayors, then it's important to be specific like that. There's more at play here than just simply whether yourself attended something and then, you know, slap the badge and imply the chain on top of that.
Thank you very much, Tim, we'll move on, straight over to David.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I've been a councillor for a fairly long time here now and I've been, obviously, up to Brockstow, when they've had parish meetings and such for. When I was mayor twice, obviously, you get invited up there, but you don't get invited up there as the mayor and obviously one doesn't wear one's chain. And that's, that's the way things have always been.
I'm going to stop you there, David, because we have actually gone through this, with Tim saying exactly the same thing. I agree totally with what you both said and we'll take it from there and we'll make sure that that's looked at. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Richard?
Yeah, it's nice to see this and it's nice though the mayor's enjoying it. I mean, I know I did and I know everyone else has before and I'm sure whoever does it next will, so it is good, it's important. I also like to see when I see on social media the mayor using the hashtag #mayorofstapford, because again, it makes it easier to find things and that, for mayor events. But my question is, I don't understand why the hashtags being used for events that's not mayor events. Like, there was an event on Ickingslay Park that was not the town council's event and the mayor wasn't there and it had got the hashtag #stapfordtowncouncil, #mayorofstapford and I had lots of people saying to me, why was that? So I said I'd raise it in the council meeting, thank you. It wasn't on the town councils, it was on Simon's personal one. The hashtag's being used when it's not official mayor events and I just think you've got to be careful where you're using it, because an official invite is an official invite, if you're not, then you shouldn't really be using it.
Yes, I'll make sure that it doesn't happen, David, I do apologise. Right. Clerk's report, now, since the noting report.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm very pleased to be through the whole thing, hopefully you'll have a look. I've been rather busy, to say the least. Obviously, I am working on my own, well, just the end of July, I've been working on my own, trying to get things sorted. But joining the, because entering from January to July, I've been also working with new staff and having to train them on top of everything I am doing, so this is just a roundup, hopefully, which covers most of what I've been doing for the year. I'm sure I forgot some things, there's lots of stuff that probably hasn't made it on to here, that I'll remember at some point in the future that I have achieved as well. But if anyone's got any questions, please do ask.
Yes.
Can I just say, I think everybody on the council has read through this, we'd like to say thank you very much for your continued dedication to doing the role, and able to go in difficult with a lack of staff. And I do appreciate the hours that you are continuing, because, you know, I get to see the time sheets and I know the hours and the funny hours that you're working to cover. And it's these evenings, days in the mornings, and all sessions, and how flexible you are being. So I just think I would want to say a big thank you for doing that.
All right, and on to financial update.
Mr Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of questions through you, the...
This is just a noting report?
Yes, it's questions.
Okay.
The item... I'll give an observation first off, but we're talking about this later. I think it's a, I think it's a bit disingenuous to, in terms of representation of opinion, to say that there have been misconceptions seem to have cropped up with regards to the allotments. I happen to know, and I'm sure other councillors do, that people are bloody livid. We'll come on to that later. 1.4. I find it quite ambiguous and I don't really know what it's referring to. It says that to sort out the road situation on Albany, I may have missed it, if there has been a report on this, but at the moment, the road situation left me and all I have on my notes is a question mark going, I don't know what the road situation is, so I'd be grateful to know, thank you. The, similarly on 2.4, four ideas have been submitted and feedback is awaited. Would, could you elaborate very briefly on what the four ideas are? Because I, again, am not in the loop on this, thank you.
So the, what was it, the road situation on Albany, this is something that we lot of holders have raised and it is an issue. It's the centre of the road, it's quite high up, because the track is worn away. So when they're riding up, it's way too rotten with their car. So I've had to go and I finally got hold of the contractor to go and have a look at what we can do. And he's, he's remembered what the options are and so I'm just waiting for the quote on that, where we can talk about that in detail.
2.4, four ideas.
Four ideas, so, kind of remember these now, so one was like a writing workshops to lead up to, as you know, we do the writing competition in February, or Valentine's Day. We ran it this year, it didn't, we're going there, so we're trying to do that again through the arts group. And this is sort of an extra thing on this, to have writing workshops which will lead up to the performance on the town square. So this kind of links into another thing that we're wanting to do, which was the, I'm calling it square sounds at the moment, but music on the square over a lunchtime period on a Saturday, trying to come back drop two people coming shopping and trying to encourage people to come and stay in the town.
I don't mind, I don't mind, Town Clerk, sorry, through you, through you, Mr Mayor. I don't mind if you get back to me on that, I am interested to know. And the ones that you've described actually sound really good, so thanks for the, thanks for the report.
David, people's side.
Yes, this is truly, Mr Mayor, thanks for looking at your report of 6.1 and 2. Obviously, the annex at the moment is going to be losing us money income. And you say that you've actually had some people look around. Is there a profitable how the place looks or what, or have they given you feedback?
It's, the people that have looked at it, there's nothing wrong with the inside of stuff, there's a bit of work to do on the wall. There's like, plaster's got dot and dab marks on it where they're taking off the tiles and things, so it just needs doing it. But it's been painted, it looks fine inside, otherwise then that is perhaps just my old CD, I don't know. But they, the people that have been interested, one was a painting contractor, who had heard about it on Break Line, he just never came back to me, he was interested, but then he never came back. And then another was a charity group that was interested and they've sort of been back a few times and had a look and then sort of undernod and I'm not quite sure that it's quite right for them for what they need to use. So now I'm at a point where I've got now no interest, so I need to go and let it go through whatever else I think is going to get it, to get it marked, is it again?
All right, thank you, thank you.
I was saying those two ideas really did have to be, special motions of that, no, that was very good, it took them four months, but it hit.
Yeah, I remember one, one was a food festival. One was a food festival, which I think Brockstow, we won't win that, but Brockstow are looking, possibly doing that across the town, within the borough. So that was a good one, can't remember what the fourth one is, it's one in town. Sure it's a funny one, but yes. Yeah, we've talked about this event, I'm sure, but I just can't remember.
Okay. We're now going over to item number eight, now A and C are noting reports to be given. So I'm going to pass straight over to Sabrina for this one.
I can add just an overall summary of the season payments date, noted. Have taken questions on that, if you've got any?
No, okay. Item D is the approval of funding for August, and that's since the last meeting, so I think that's probably kind of autumn or December. I think that's probably due by, yeah, so from the 30th to the end of August. And there's the approval, obviously, I very much so need to see that.
Would the, Mr Mayor, would you permit? Can we actually talk about the last year's accounts?
I don't think we can, because they've been signed up, haven't they, I might completely wrong on that.
This, no, it's not on the agenda, do you mean the audit that's come?
The audit that's come through, which, yes.
Yeah, no, that will go to the November, I mean, if you've got questions outside, I'll have to take those, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't.
Thank you, David. Yes. Richard?
Oh, sorry, I thought we were pointing over that way. Yeah, no, I've, it's just, it's just a general question, I've seen some of the, we're looking at the payments thing, aren't we? I'm on the right thing, aren't I? Okay, there's just a few things on there where we've been ordering stuff off Amazon and I know they're pretty quick and convenient, you know, I've used them myself like most people do. But I just think some of them things, especially like artificial flowers, these shops on the High Street that sell them and I think as a town council, instead of buying stuff off Amazon, I know it's convenient, it's quick and all that lot. But I just think it'd be nice if we could actually support the str- the shops on the High Street that sell these actual items.
Yeah, they, so the things that we wanted, I haven't seen on the High Street. So, uh, obviously I will try and buy things openly if I can, uh, but sometimes for speed or they don't actually have the things I'm looking for, I will go elsewhere. Um, I can't do anything else that's, I mean, so.
I mean, it's got things like serving tongs, you can win bargain buys all the pan shop, artificial flowers, there's buckets full of them outside bargain buys. It'd just be nice to support the local businesses, that, that's all, but thank you anyway.
So needs approval of the payment on the first floor, so have I dropped? Ah, there we go, Theresa first. And Richard for second. All in favour? Or yes? All abstained? Thank you very much. And once again, over to Sabrina.
Uh, just, I tend to say it's just a little bit of an analysis, um, of the, of September. Uh, we have had the, um, partial payment of the, uh, town council grant for our project on the, the four block post of the, um, uh, flower entrance in the, in the town. Um, and that project is, is starting to get to a point where we might actually see something, which is fantastic. So, um, so we'll be looking to obviously expand as we may, uh, on, I hope to be very soon.
Right. And now we're going on to item nine. And what I'm going to do is pass this photo over to, uh, to Lucy, if that's all right. Sorry, Sabrina, if that's all right.
Thanks, uh, so, um, obviously I've, I've been, I've pulled my report for the, the options that we've brought, that we will come back to. Uh, but I wanted to just give an overview, because, uh, I know there's been some talk about this, uh, out in the community. Um, this is the early stages of what is a 12 month project, um, essentially. So, as, is it now the boundaries are affected and all the parishes are looking at, uh, being looked at? Um, the borough talks to us as an early consultant to see what we think about what they're putting forward, and then see if we've got anything that we might, that we might want to put forward. Um, and, um, they will, it will be planned. So they will, whatever we decide tonight is not a final position by any one stretch of the imagination. It will be submitted to the borough and they will look at that and see what, what can be made as a viable boundary. Uh, because what they're looking to do is correct some anomalies, can I say the word? Anomalies, um, where the boundaries run through properties or through somebody's garden, or it takes a couple of properties off the street. Uh, and maybe people have got to go out into parish to come back into a holding station. So that's what they're looking to fix, um, with this review. Uh, and obviously those are the things that people might want to put forward and suggest as well. So you've got the options that the, uh, the Borough Council have put forward, which are people trying to creep around ledgers, um, and just correcting some of those anomalies. And then working party have looked, um, at, at those options and had a think about, well, actually, this doesn't happen very often, uh, with the reviews, so if you want to do something differently, you need to look at it now. Um, and so that's what has happened. They've come forward with, uh, two other options, uh, third, which we've been comfortable with more, uh, order staying, what the borough have suggested. But as we could decide on those options, we may come forward with something else. Uh, but this is, as I say, a 12 month, um, project. Um, when the submissions were received, the borough will look at those and then they will decide what they want to put forward as the, uh, things that they will go for in the order for public consultation, which starts in December. And I think that's about a two, three month, um, process. Uh, and then the process will move on to the final stages, taking into account all of that to be put in place within the order, which will come into force for the 2023 elections. And then that's, that's basically the end of the process. It's a lot more complicated than that, but that's an outline of how it works.
Um, thanks, Mr Mayor. I think it's, I love the idea of options, I really do. But I was so, so shocked and disappointed when I read that there was a recommendation on the, um, uh, on the options, because that wasn't necessary, I don't think. And, um, and I was even more shocked when the recommendation was the most extreme and perceivably land grabby of, of all of the four. Uh, looking at option four myself, I think that that is absolutely perfect. Um, it tweaks up rogue elements that have always annoyed many of us. In fact, probably, uh, probably all of us, like, um, the, uh, the anomaly at the south end of Trow Park Drive, which should, to all intents and purposes, and by the local residents' views, which, which I have canvassed, it should be a part of Trow. And yet, because it happens to cross Boundary Brook, is in the parish of Stapleford, specifically Stapleford North Ward, that's, that's good to, to clean that up. Uh, Valmont Road, there's a, um, a, a few houses out of the, uh, out of the row, um, happen to be set back just past the arbitrary imaginary line, um, that somebody, that somebody drew on a map once upon a time, probably about the time of the Doomsday Book or something. That makes a lot of sense to, where to keep communities contiguous and make sure that neighbours are represented by the same people as neighbours wherever possible. Um, the, this, that's, that's good. To go over and above that is dangerous. Um, and to, and to make a recommendation for the most extreme version, I think is, I think it's darn right scary. Um, if this council wants to extend its influence, then I think we need to sell it a lot harder. And at the moment, I wouldn't advocate that anybody, that anybody else takes representation by this, by this council, because I don't think that we're doing a particularly brilliant job at, um, achieving value for money. I'm sure that if the residents of, from one side of Ullam Lane up to, um, the, um, up to the Bramkirk Sherwin Roundabout, were to, were to look enviably next door at what's going on in Stapleford and say, hey, all of that's been done by the town council, then there might be less of a public outcry than we've, than we've seen in the last few days. Um, but, but I don't think it is, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to, uh, to, to make a recommendation. It's, what's annoyed me the most, Mr Mayor, and I will wrap up with this, what's annoyed me the most is that it gets, it drags our name through the mud. I know, and we all know, that, that, that recommendation was made by a working party of four people. But a lot of people don't understand the process, and now it's set community against community as Bramkirk thinks that Stapleford's trying to take over. And I've been trying to assure people Stapleford is not trying to take over. You, the, the, that your address and your street signs aren't going to change. However, we are elected people that are meant to understand the thoughts and feelings and reactions of our local community. So to make a recommendation, albeit one that I hope will get voted down, um, in favour of, in favour of option four, at, at this sitting, has caused a massive amount of upset, and it was an irresponsible thing to do when we could have made the sensible recommendation and then decided, hey, you know, maybe we want to tweak that on the night. So, uh, so please, in the future, if somebody sits to make a recommendation on a working party, could they just think about how the residents are going to react to this? What thoughts it's going to leave in their head and what reputation it leaves this council with? Because the damage is done now.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to Richard and then over to Theresa.
Yeah, thank you. I've got a statement to read out here off a Bramkirk resident, so I apologise if I get some other words wrong, you know what I'm like. So it's, it, thank you, it won't take me a minute. So this is a statement for Stapleford Town Council, and, and I'll hand this into the town clerk if you want, then it's each one a minute. And if you want me to email it to you, I'll do that as well. Cut and paste pretty good, isn't it? Right, so this is a statement for Stapleford Town Council meeting on the 17th of September 2021, relating to agenda item nine, I think that's right, isn't it?
Yes.
From Sue Samboles, editor for Bramkirk Today. And she says, my husband and I, that, that's her, not me, obviously. My husband and I moved into Bramkirk as newlyweds in 1989. We started our family in 1992 and began to feel part of our, of the community of Bramkirk. Initially with a Bramkirk-based NCT group, later St Michael's toddler group and then local schools. I became more involved in supporting the Bramkirk community this cen- century when I represented Bramkirk Neighbourhood Watch at police safety meetings. Started regularly attending the Bramkirk Cat meetings and in 2011 joined three of the Bramkirk residents to create a community website. And 10 years later, we are still serving the Bramkirk residents as volunteers by keeping them updated about matters relevant to them. In more recent years, I've become actively involved with Bramkirk Neighbourhood Forum, Bramkirk and Stapleford Community Hub, AKA Bramkirk Hills Caff in the Park, and I'm a member of a small group of St Michael's and All Angels Church Bramkirk. Whilst I acknowledge Stapleford as a strong community feel to it, and as our nearest town, we have used Stapleford services over the years, plus those in Beeston and other surrounding areas, I strongly identify as a Bramkirk resident and I'm not in favour of any action to move the border. Geographically, Bramkirk may be split by a large island, but we're a strong community. And if you look at residents comments app, and then there's a link to the Bramkirk Today article that's on there, I'm not going to read a link out. And then it says, and particularly on our Facebook post, you will see that I am not alone. And that's on behalf of Sue Samboles, so thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you very much. Theresa?
Okay, um, yes, I know, I've seen the stuff, I've seen the comments. Um, just to make the process clear, what the, um, working group was asked to do was to make a recommendation to council. And obviously, to do that, we actually have to put it on the agenda, which has to be made public. So the recommendation must to council to be discussed as council, not to go beyond Stapleford just per se. But obviously, we know that other people are going to see it. But I can't see how we could make a statement about what we would like to see unless we made it public to everybody. Um, yes, I did go, well, we did discuss the options and we did go for the, the biggest changes. But I think it would have been almost remiss of us not to suggest the big changes first. And then almost try and hide it. And then if this council did decide they wanted to go with the big changes, then it would have been more uproar. If anything, we've actually elicited the views of people early on, so we can consider them. And I am perfectly willing to abandon this first option, because we know it won't progress beyond borough. And that is what this process is about. So I don't actually regret suggesting it one little bit. And I'd just like to clear up some of the misconceptions that have actually come out in those messages. And like you said, Tim, it's not actually going to not be Bramkirk. And I think we need to explain that, you know, we're changing our electoral boundary, not trying to make a change to a town's name. Part of the process is that we could actually change the name of this council. This council could be instead of Stapleford Town Council, Stapleford and Bramkirk West Council, and actually integrate that way. There are other options, you know, it's not about trying to obliterate the character of Bramkirk at all. And I take you to the point about, you know, enviously looking over from one side of Ullam Lane to the other. But in all honesty, um, we know that the people in this green area of Bramkirk, uh, that we highlighted, use Stapleford and see Stapleford as their central point for, for, uh, easy access to goods and services. Um, what we were actually thinking of is actually inviting them to be part of the community that gets a say in how those goods and services and events are run, because currently they don't. Um, and also, yes, there is a financial implication to this, and I won't lie about it. If we took on that area, we would probably incre- increase the number of residences by about 10%. Um, in truth, what that means is we can share our precept over a larger area. Effectively, we could reduce it for everyone in Stapleford. And at the end of the day, I have been elected to represent the interests of the people of Stapleford. And we've heard a lot about what the people in Bramkirk would like. And I'm happy to take those comments on board, because they will influence the decision we put forward. But I think it would be in the interests of the people of Stapleford to actually consider this, which is why I proposed it and was one of the people that did propose it. And I don't mind that you don't think that things aren't being worked, run well in this council, for you, Mr Mayor. But we've got to consider that this isn't necessarily about this administration. This administration ends in two years' time. We don't know who's going to be sat around this table in two years' time. And what I am concerned about is putting those people in the strongest possible position to represent the interests of the people of Stapleford that I possibly can. So I will actually say, I am happy that there is strong enough feeling that we won't go with this. But I am also very happy that I did propose it, because you will never get the bog standard vanilla suggestions from me. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I just, a little, it says a quick question, because that was a statement I read out. It does say on here about, um, it would allow the residents to access the town mayor. I was just wondering how many residents have actually made that request? And were they also told that there's a mayor of Brockstow as well? Who, whoever, obviously it's me at the minute, but in the future it was someone else. And as Theresa said, moving forward, there, there is a mayor of Brockstow. So I'm just wondering how, it does say in here residents of the area have done that. So how many of them have actually requested service, the, visit from this mayor? And how many of them were actually told that there is a mayor of Brockstow?
I'll pass over to Sabrina on that one.
Those, those, uh, comments didn't put it through my office. It was councillors that have said they've been speaking to people in the community. So I've not had any that I'm aware of. Um, but it was councillors that have said they've been speaking to people and they've said people were disappointed and couldn't get the, the town mayor to come to their events.
Just a quicken on this myself, I mean, I'm aware, what Theresa said, I fully agree, we've got to move forward. Right? It's getting a bit nitty gritty again. I was looking at some of the comments that were made by certain Bramkirk people about the Stapleford's this and Stapleford's that. And the same can be said vice versa, what we say about them. At the end of the day, we're all here to improve this community. Right? I'm sure when it goes to the borough, there'll be a lively debate on whatever we re- uh, say. And the debate will go on for days. Because most of these boundary changes do. Whether the people at this level are aware of it or not, I'm not sure. It's the same at, at the minute, all within Castle. Everybody's arguing because Castle, they're moving the border across the road, so everyone's moaning about this town again. But remember, what happens is, once everyone's con- been consulted, it goes to the borough. The borough will then make its recommendations to go to the boundary commission. So while we're having pointless trying, calling each other here, I can't work it out. I think what we need to do is think about what we want positive for our area and move forward from them. Because like Theresa said there, some of us might not be here in two years. We might not be voted in again. So it's for us children and everyone else, not for us, what's best for us. Because you could argue that most people in Bramkirk send their kids to Woodsworth or St John's, or where are them schooled? Are they in Stapleford or, and I say, am I confused? So there, there's loads of arguments about what's right and what's wrong. Let's just try and think what we're putting together and put it through properly. And have a good think about what we're saying. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to see next, and Ross?
Just to answer Richard, um, yes, and yes, they were.
Thank you.
Um, I had a couple of requests for the town mayor, and I explained you were out of the border, so yes, I did, on both.
That's appreciated, thank you.
Um, and on the border issue, I thi- I think it's a shame that it's been made into a us and them kind of situation. Because there, it was these requests that have been asked, they didn't realise they were in Bramkirk. And it's like, it's an invisible line we're arguing over. And most of them people are in the county catchment where the border is. Uh, and the house prices, prices haven't lowered because they're in the borough, in the county catchment. It's, you know, it's an invisible line, um, and it's caused all this distress.
I, I, I mean, Chair, through you, I, I mean, a, a couple of ladies have rang me up. Obviously, then, I suppose they know I'm postman, even though I'm not this month, right? And the first thing the lady said, oh, I have every respect for everybody, I, I'll not change, right? The first thing she said, and I, I actually did laugh over the phone, she says, well, my house price will go down. So I says, well, where do you live? I'm not saying where she said. I said, well, your house price not go down there. I said, some, some house prices in Stapleford, I says, Pippin's start at a million. And hers was actually less. So I, you know, we have it, so I says, where do you get, where does this come from? About your house will be good down in value when some houses in Stapleford start at a million, and on Tertan Lane in particular, and all the way up. So whatever negativity is going out, and, and we're in a period now where everybody always wants to do is talk negative, from Bush, Bush's not being cooked, to Rose having potholes in. And that's the way, our job is to make sure that they get the right information and we get the right deal for the people of this town or this area, to be honest, not this town, this area.
I have to agree with you, John, I think we do have a positivity role in everything. And as John pointed out as well, we can put our information through and then it's over to the borough. The borough will make the decisions. We are just, if you like, putting these ideas forward. We are just, if you like, putting these ideas forward and listening to what the people are saying. Right, I'm going to go, uh, Tim and David, uh, who else? Right, Tim.
Thanks. I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat anything I, um, anything I said earlier. Um, just to, just, I, I will just, I will slightly, I will reiterate though, we know our area. We know what people's reactions are going to be. We know what the misconceptions. I made it myself. My first, my first delivery round of the, of the Liberal Democrat Focus when I joined the party. I got a bit carried away on the other side of Yulam Lane. I got a right telling off, I can tell you that. And that's when I learnt where the border is and learnt what the reaction of the public to that border is and how strong the community identities are and how people do not want to cross the beams. I think that the recommendation made by this council, while I am always an advocate of exploring all the options, I think the recommendation made by the working group to this council that we know was going to go on public documentation because, um, Theresa's right, it was always going to be on a public document and a matter of public record. That it's, it's clumsy politics to not take into account how people are going to react. If we know our people, then, then we should, then we should be able to predict how they, um, how they react and we should be able to, to mitigate that with more sensitive communication. But I will, but I will stop there and say, and say, I think that hopefully, um, we're all agreed that the, that, that the Borough's base recommendations on the, um, on, on the options, um, is actually an eminently good one that will solve up a lot of historical issues. So may I take this opportunity, Mr Mayor, to, to formally, um, propose option that, that we, that we as a town council recommend our support of option four to the Borough.
I'm going to let Theresa have a comment.
Before we go on to that, I just want to explain why we suggested the extension beyond the boundary of the A52. Uh, because we are sorting out anomalies. And if you look at the map, you can see that little tiny noggin there of the white space beyond the A52. That is two houses on Vessel Lane that are beyond the A52. And they actually are served by, by Stapleford. And that's the only way to get to that area. So they have come into that boundary. Um, you can see that there are four properties that are actually in that area. And one of the criteria that we were asked to look at was the community side of it. And those houses, those four properties in that area, I did go on Google Earth to look for them. It was quite tricky to find some of them. Um, one is a farmhouse, uh, that's actually considerably further down the track. And is in Totun, but isn't actually accessible without going through Stapleford by road. And I did a crude Google Maps, uh, distance measurement. And it was going to be about 4.4 kilometres for those people to go by car to the nearest police station in, uh, Totun. And the irony of it was, they were actually only a kilometre from Midland.
Midland Avenue.
And they virtually had to drive past it to go to Totun. So there is quite an anomaly just beyond that point. Uh, the other properties, I think, are associated with the Gardles', um, the Gardles Centre. Now, obviously, I would say they are very connected to Stapleford because they've always been very generous in the past, they've donated plans to our community. So on the community side of it, I would say that Gardles was actually part of Stapleford. Uh, but I think there was two properties in Gardles, because I was trying to find the other four. And it looked like there was two discreet buildings, which I don't know whether there are two discreet houses or not. Maybe the postman can, can answer that better for me. Um, the fourth property that I could find was actually close to the boundary that we call. And I'll admit, it was 50/50 whether they were closer to the police stations in Totun or police stations in Stapleford. So there were actually, those four properties, there were anomalies. Um, you can say, well, okay, what does it matter over there's four, what, what's the impact there? Um, it was basically, like we've said in the past, I know that Richard said that he was quite upset that we didn't include that in our neighbourhood plan. Um, there was a, a thing that came up in discussion just today in the Towns Deal meeting where because the Towns Deal is for the area of Stapleford only, um, this new cycle route, the funding stops at the boundary of Stapleford. And because that hadn't been included in that boundary, you couldn't actually go to tram stop from the Towns Deal. So there's actual real advantages towards thinking about extending that area. And also, it would give people of Stapleford a say in some of the developments that are going ahead. Because I certainly feel we've not been consulted by the Chetman neighbourhood plan group as much as I would like. Um, I did check with, I think the lady's name's Janice, is it? Yeah, who talked about this. And I said, will it affect the neighbourhood plan area? No, it won't at the moment, because obviously the neighbourhood plans are in. So this isn't, I tried to stop the development going ahead if HS2 goes ahead. We don't know what's happening with HS2, we don't really know what's happening. So it did seem appropriate to actually consider these anomalous buildings, actually bringing them in to Stapleford. Um, because that is the traditional boundary. It's, um, I don't know, I was certainly disappointed when the eclesiastical boundary changed for, to take it to there. It didn't seem to, there was no consultation whatsoever, um, that I, I saw. And they just decided to change the boundary. And I feel that we're going to, you know, as we've heard, how passionate people in Brampton are about retaining their sense of identity. I'm also passionate about that. I completely understand it. And to me, that is still part of Stapleford. We made the argument before that the tram stop is in Stapleford. Um, obviously, we acknowledge that, um, the Totun neighbourhood, uh, the Totun plans that are coming forward may change where that boundary is in the future. You know, it might not be practical because there might be things that have built over the line. But when we looked at the maps, because we did as a steering group, look at a lot of maps. We looked at what Totun have got planned, where things are going. A lot of that area is apparently going to be an innovation village, which may not go ahead now because it was going to be a mixture of residential and commercial businesses, um, in that area. That's probably one of the things that's going to be most effective, depending on what the decision is made. Um, but all of the plans seem to have a continuation of the tram line, which we felt in the future could be the boundary, an unacknowledgable boundary between Stapleford and Totun, should that, those plans go ahead and when those plans go ahead. So what we proposed was that this park be included in Stapleford, those four properties, because they are anomalous anyway. And we felt that there was a reasonable argument to say, well, these are anomalous and they can come into Stapleford. With a view of what would this look like in the future. So that is why, um, we'd suggested, you know, putting that in. So I can't remember which option this is. I think it's this option two. So I would argue that option two is the one that we go for.
Just going to come back before I hand over for a second. I remember Richard telling me, with full belief, that he's responsible why Stapleford sign is where it is. He made sure that that is in Stapleford. And when they were talking about changing it, um, a few years ago, he nearly went absolutely nuts.
There was no nearly, and the sign's still there, so I won.
You see, that's why I'm supporting option two, because I believe that that should be parish in Stapleford. Because what Richard has done, he's put the mark there. That is our mark in Stapleford. That's where Stapleford comes to. And we need to make sure that that is represented on this council. Now, I've said my, my deepest apologies. I think it's first over to, uh, David, Dan, Richard. And, yes, so David.
Right, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, Mr Mayor, um, I'm not a councillor that normally goes way back in time. But at one time, Stapleford Town Council had a new name to it. And it was, uh, Sandegue and, uh, and Stapleford Council. Now, I've looked at the plans, all of them. And I've listened to a lot of people who I've spoken to in, in Stapleford and at Brampton. The people of Brampton don't seem to want Stapleford moving, um, taking over more land. The people in Stapleford don't really want it changing at all. In 2011, um, this boundary, commission this boundary changes. Possibly, um, it came up before. Uh, we made recommendations regarding, uh, Valmont rules, et cetera. Um, and it, it, it decided, the commission decided that things would stay the same. Now, obviously, obviously this council and councillors have ambitions about what they would like to see. The town expanding or not. Uh, and obviously, we have, whatever you do, we have to be careful the way we do it. Now, I have to say to you, looking at the plans and, and the, and the printed word laid out, is that in my opinion, then I think that possibly the Boundary Commission will go for Plan Four. But if, if it's decided that it goes to Plan Two, I think at this particular time, um, I don't think the council, um, um, are going to find it very easy in the future, um, if they're taking over more land. Yes, there might be more money, might be this, that and the other. But at the end of the day, the council has to show that it's doing really well as it is now, yes? And let people at Brampton stay where they are and let people in Stapleford stay where they are. And I, and I truly believe, uh, um, the Boundary Commission won't make any changes at all for maybe the third time running. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much for your input. Please, Matt. Oh, I don't know, it's Richard then Bob.
Well, one I spoke once, so let Bob go first.
Um, I think this is not all about land, and it certainly wasn't about house prices. It's a bit of a fickle master. I mean, two words to say on that. Build farm. Who would have thought? I think it's, um, and the people in Brampton, you can look over their shoulder and see the house prices constantly up to them. So let's forget about that. It's nothing like that. I've got a friend who's died two weeks ago, who was from Stapleford. And they are a bit older than Stapleford, educated their business there, married their parents, lived two hundred yards from them. Well, we are now buried here. But she did all her life near, I don't know, this first house in the village, just like the people who wrote in. So it's like from that side, she always thought it was this political boundary was a little bit ridiculous. But she, she brought her house price to go down. So I think things have been that a bit now. Of those up in the centres who argue that they were just as much in their four bedroom, large garden, cold ice like house and so on in Brampton. So, but let's not start turf war here. Um, it's all about who feels represented. If Brampton, their residents feel that they're adequately represented by who they've got at the moment, why should we just do that? However, for future representation, as Richard, when we went on that boundary walk, said, look at this, this should all be ours. Um, I'm, I'm edging to, I was to do, or edging to a three.
I mean, it was Richard who, when I was looking at this with the floor, his words kept going through my mind. When we were on the neighbourhood plan before I was councillor, he kept on saying, that's ours. Every time. And I said that to Theresa when we were sitting there, anti good self. And it's a case of like, that's got to be looked at. And that's why that's on there, because I agree with Richard on this one. That should be ours, because it goes up to where he's got the post. So, you know, Richard's post, and yeah, I'll give him his due for that. So, yeah, that's where I think, which, but anyway, we've all known this. So my deepest apologies, I'm rambling again. Richard, it's over to you.
Yeah, my dad always said, argue if you're right. And I know I was right on that one. That's why I argued, you know. I wish she was here to see me get that one right. I mean, I, I always turn up at these meetings with an open mind and I, and I think most of us do. And, and I think that's what you should do. Um, I, I was actually looking at option four, but I, I, I keep going back to two as well, because that bit at the bottom. Right, there's nothing on there at the minute. There's, there's going to be development on there at some point. It's, it's just going to happen, isn't it? Do you know what I mean? It's, you've got to build somewhere. I'm not saying I agree with it or not. Because I, I have, I have fought against building in places like that. But it, it, I remember when I was first on the town council, it's what I thought David was going to say, actually. And there always used to be something on the agenda called Black Pad. Nothing ever happened. It was just on the agenda. And, and I think it's the path that kind of goes all the way down to Asda. We, we're not, we don't need to move that far. Because Graham Hill would not be happy. Um, but I, I think, I've, I've, option two is for me, because I, I just think that bit at the bottom, it is ours. We need to, you know, claim it back kind of thing. Um, it, it is the historic boundary. We're not going into something that was never ours to start with. And I just think, yeah, that's, you know, I, I have changed my mind a little bit. And I just think that's the one I'm going to go for as well.
Thank you very much for your time, John. It's up to you.
We'll just say, I disagree with him. I think that i- i- his border should have been, his Yulam Lane one should have been further up. Right? If you look at it, because the, the actual parish boundary, because I'm not bad at history. The actual parish boundary is actually Bork Lane, which then cuts across.
Yeah.
Cuts, cuts across the A52, then goes along the back end of Chilwell Barracks. All the way down, all the way down where Theresa bought up about them houses, the two houses at the top, which it actually in Stapleford as well, right? That's the actual parish. Because I told Mr Negus, who's on Bork Lane, and he's very, he's very. Yeah, he's very wide up, right? Uh, and, and my point is, is that, yeah. We, we have actually lost, because if this, if, if the Chilwell neighbourhood plan goes ahead, what Richard's always said before, and I've said, is that Totun tram stop is in Stabber, end of story. And always has been. But it was always forced down our throats by politicians who know more than us, right? That it was going to be the Totun tram stop. That was forced down our throats. All right, I don't think Stapleford tram stop would have sounded so good, right? But at the end of the day, it was still our land.
Yes.
And, and, and that's the way I feel.
I'll have to go to Richard, don't bother.
Yeah, I can say, option, option two does go up to Bork Lane. It's, it does. Where, where John said, it does, it does go up to there.
Oh, I remember that, yeah. You showed me with great reverence on the map.
Still got the maps?
Yes, it did. We'll be around my map. Uh, if you look at the first neighbourhood plan, we've had a, an ex-town plan. He says it's very illogical how everything seems to be going up, um, near the schools. He said that's not the natural centre of the town, whereas it naturally should be connected despite the A52, um, which he said it should be slowed down, um, and, and to go that way. I'm starting to see what he's saying.
Yeah, it is when you look back at all this and we've all had our discussions and things start to drop into place. As they do, especially when you've spent seven years, is it now, Theresa, doing neighbourhood planning?
Yeah, seven years.
It's a case of like things that were said and you just think, okay, I'll pop that over there now, just throw back in. Through an occasion like this, and it makes sense. So, is there anybody else who wants to say?
Sorry, just before, um, we sort of go ahead to end the sort of option selection here. Um, I just want to draw your attention to obviously the, the northern end of the boundary, which Borough's recommendations are there to tidy up some anomalies. So I wonder if you want to select an option, it would also include the changes that the Borough, uh, have recommended as well. Because they are, they are the professionals at this. They've not done this for the no reason. Like those things do need to be changed. Um, and I, I just think, I think they might have worth putting, putting that out.
Richard.
Oh, I'd like to propose option two, including the changes that Brockstow's made at the top end. And obviously, there's one on the right as well, isn't there, for the little Valmont bit? That, that's my, if someone wants to second that.
Seconded by Theresa.
Mr Mayor?
Yes.
I already made a proposal. I was never given the option to, to, to have a second. So I would, I would ask if anybody would be interested in seconding, um, option four, if we go. And if you wouldn't mind me coming back before we, before we go to that vote to summarise why option four as opposed to option two, since that wasn't on the table when I made that proposal.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I please the excuse of seconding option two?
Of course you can. So what we'll do is we'll sit down and generate one, uh, councillors' one, and then we'll come back to it. And then we'll come straight back to Tim. I think it's very interesting these guys, and that's why we're talking about this question.
Such a shame, you're happy.
Not at all, not at all.
Real shame, to be honest. Well, it was, it was likely to someone who had, I don't know, maybe that way, though.
Kids been getting it, you know.
I know, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think I've seen it, it was about twenty, twenty-four months ago. Okay, okay, okay.
Also from option four.
That's no problem. What I'm going to do is go straight to Tim now, to outline why he thinks option four should be thrown. Tim, it's up to you.
Thank you, um, right, more arguing against option two, because that wasn't on the table when I, when I last spoke. Um, the, the A fifty-two wasn't traditionally there in the, uh, in the, in, in anywhere, it, it just didn't exist. So, uh, so, you know, there would have been at one time a dotted line around a bunch of fields, and they said, okay, these fields belong to Stapleford, these fields belong to Toton. These ones to Bramco, so on, so forth. Now there is the A fifty-two. Um, it is an impasse, impassable barrier in all but the remotest of places. That does not make for a contiguous community. That we do know what's happening on the other side of it. I've, I've spoken at length and other people have, if anybody follows the strategic planning that goes on at Brockstone and at higher. Um, there's a, uh, there's a huge, great Midlands engine, strategic master plan framework for all of this. We know exactly with or without HS two, what kind, what scale, and the scope of development that's gonna go on in that patch. And, uh, so, uh, so any dotted isolated buildings that we see there at the moment, they're not going to exist. There will not be any residents, uh, any residents in those buildings, because they are gonna be bulldozed, simple as. And so, uh, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, oh, but we're, we're their closest post office. By the time this comes in, they, they, they'll have already been sold up and, and CPO'd. Um, so, uh, so really, and Bardell's, Bardell's is the same. You know, we are going to lose access, and I've been arguing this, um, on behalf of Stapleford residents. And I've been arguing against proposals from earlier incarnations of the neighborhood plan, and I'm assuming they haven't changed. Um, that, uh, the Bessel Lane access is only going to be potentially. Although I've got the county to put this, to, to put that option back on the table, at the moment, the, uh, the feels I get from the, from the neighborhood plan. Is that it's advocating that the Bessel Lane access will only be, um, pedestrian cycle, uh, with a, with a public transport bus gate. So that means you can't now drive from one part of the, of town to the other, because don't imagine for a second. That the, uh, that Toton Lane, and it is incidentally Toton Lane tram stop, not Toton tram stop, which. By extension means it's in Stapleford, because you don't have a Stapleford Lane in Stapleford and a Toton Lane in Toton, but there you go. So, uh, so the, the Toton Lane, um, will be very, very different from what it currently is now. So don't imagine for a second that we're gonna get the same level of access to, to south of the A fifty-two from that roundabout. I've been arguing that we need a good level of access from that roundabout, and that we don't want to be driving up north to, to pretty much where, um, uh. Bulk Lane is at the moment, to where, uh, where there's gonna be a brand new big shiny, um, slip road. I've been arguing against that, but, but it, it may well happen. So, uh, so these proposals, and ultimately we're here about communities. We are here to represent and, and, and defend contiguous cohesive communities. We will have nothing, nothing at all in common with what's going on south of the A fifty-two. I'd be surprised if there's any residents living on that patch that we're talking about, and, um, and, and we certainly can't say in a civic sense. That, that it's our responsibility to, to look after that, that bit, just because once upon a time, that was the edge of some farmer's field. Option two is not, not even remotely viable. I would like to, uh, I would like to think that, um, oh, and by the way, it's not the Boundary Commission that's gonna be assessing this, it's just Brockstone Borough Council. And really and truly, if we want to claw back any credibility as council in terms of what recommendations we put forward, I suggest we put forward a sensible one, that actually has a chance of going through. Um, so that we can maybe, you know, crow about it and say, yes, we supported that, which will be undoubtedly option four, because in. Everybody's minds, that's the most sensible one. Unless there's an ulterior motive, which is trying to, trying to claw a load of, um, Midlands engine development money, which isn't gonna happen, because that's already established. It's gonna be devolved, it is gonna be taken away even from Brockstone to a, to a different level. I'm filling in, sorry, I've been going on, Mr. Mayor, but I've been filling in a lot of the strategic planning gaps. That have either been misrepresented or, or misunderstood of what's going on there, because if that's the argument in favor of option two. Then, then we, it's really, it's really not a sensible one, so I stick by my recommendation for, for option four.
We're just going to go to Ross, and then we'll go to the votes, Ross.
I want to put something to you first, Mr. Mayor, mine isn't about one of these particular options, it's about something that was mentioned earlier. Um, about the anger that even daring to consider having different options has brought into the community. Um, and then, um, councillor Hallam has said about clawing back. Um, so I don't know whether you want me to speak now, hold it for after the vote, because it's not gonna affect what I how I vote here.
Please speak.
Um, councillor Hallam said there was a lot of anger, um, on Bramco today, and in various other, um, social media posts about this. I mean, when, when the biggest number of people are going to change on any of these is. One thousand two hundred and eighty-three, I wonder how many of those people, um, have actually been angry about it? I suspect it's quite a small number, I, I've seen a limited number of names on the Facebook posts and things like that. But I think one of the things that stirred the anger up was two people elected to serve different areas of Brockstone. And putting this out that it was a grab by two particular political parties. Um, and I, that made me really, really angry. On, in a, in a parish council where politics really should take a vaccine, for somebody, um, or two people. To try and characterize this as a political argument between particular political parties. Um, trying to improve, I don't know what, um, I think that was, that was unacceptable. I hope at some stage those people will reconsider what they do and, um, calm things down and, and try and pour oil onto these troubled waters. And for what they said. And I would like to go back to the background here. Uh, one dot three on the document says, and it's moved to twenty-three July, the town council results in a working party. And it was a working party, the town council, not, um, and our, our, the two police departments. And anybody on the council could have put their name for it, we said three or four people. And I know one person that links to anger upon me, I'm really good. Working party held back to see if anybody else wanted before they put their name for it. And there was nobody else that was interested in going on this working party. So, that's, that's my, yes, I was, and I heard some anger expressed tonight, tonight, I've seen anger expressed on social media. There's what I was angry about in trying to turn this into a political match.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I make a point of clarification? I never ma, I never expressed, I never expressed any anger on Bramco today. Um, I was actually trying to calm things down, I didn't hide my opinion, um, because I don't think it's sensible to do that, I think it's always good to be transparent. But I never expressed any anger, I was, um, I was simply indicating that I, that I di, I didn't want, um, anybody to, to associate. Um, the conclusion of the, of the working party with, with all of the town council, and by extension, all of the town of Stapleford. I have in other channels on social media expressed anger in a generic term. About a lot of what's been going on on the town council as a whole recently, not this particular issue. I think it's important to be properly represented.
Let's do them, we're gonna come back to, no, we're going back to Ross first.
Um, I did say on Bramco today, and other social media posts, I did not say that anything would fit within Stapleford.
Councillor, that wasn't about this issue, if I'm angry generically, it's not right for you to bring it up topically.
Can I ask, because we've had two proposals, and one obviously is another second, that we try and move on to the vote, because they have been put forward, haven't they?
Yes, they have.
Um, I'm happy to go to the, I. I was just going to point out, sorry, um, Tim's argument for not moving the boundary with Bramco. Bramco Island never used to exist once. You know, the A fifty-two, that would have been all one community. But the A fifty-two now, you say, creates a natural border there, so it's either one or the other, you know, it's. That wasn't there before, you know, years ago for Bramco, and now it's split, and it's the same for. Toton and Stapleford.
I did a quick little refresh, see if we've got the pro forms, and we do, well, we've got half those ones. It's with the Stapleford and Beeston council, so that's how far back it goes. I think that's where all this comes from, but anyway, that's just by the by, and I think now we need to talk about the vote. So what I'm going to do first of all, is because Tim put his one first, we'll go for Tim, and then we'll go for Theresa, everybody's happy with that. Okay, so the Tim's vote, that we just go from what the county council says, is that, what the councillors said, is that correct?
Option four.
Option four. Right, can I have a show of hands for option four, all in favour? All against? All abstain?
Sorry, we haven't yet, so I've got five for it, six against, and two abstentions.
Yeah. Option, option two, which is Theresa's vote.
It's sorry, that was Richard's.
Chair, one to you, it was Richard's, no, it was Richard's vote, mine qualified, Richard. Theresa's second.
It's late.
If I'm, if I'm right.
Yeah.
I'm very proud, I just say we're all clear to vote, please, it's option two, plus the borough's recommendations.
Yeah, we're all the way around. Yes, okay.
I will clear before we go to the vote, please.
Yes. Okay, all in favour of option two?
Eight.
All against? All abstain? Thank you very much for voting, and thank you for the very difficult, uh, discussion. Well, Sabrina, I would serve this, it's up to you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, so this is, uh, an offer to the, uh, two parish councils from the, uh, from here, which works for the town council, obviously. Uh, to provide grit bins, um, and or salt deliveries, and they do also want to snow water in the scheme, but I think that's all it remains, they're not looking for more of that. Um, so this is whether or not the council wishes to place grit bins or just have a supply of salt, uh, or a combination of the two. And if you do want grit bins, where do you want them, please?
Richard, do you want to handle first, then we'll go to.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that County Council's been doing for a long time, obviously, and I know I've requested bins in the past, and they've done it, and there's been no cost to the town council. It, it just worries me that they're trying to pass something on to us and then make us pay for it. Um, is, is it something that, is it, is as easy as we just go yay or nay now, or is it something where we need to have a few people, like a little working group? And I know it drags things out a little bit, but it, you know, someone from each ward, or basically anyone who wants to be on it, just to come up with some areas and that. Because we could sit here all day arguing about different areas to put grit bins, and I think if we all go into our own wards and, or, or just, you know, just have a walk around the whole town as a whole. May, maybe if the town council puts some, I'm not trying to put a hook on you, but I am a little bit, maybe if we put something on social media, I don't know if you can do like a survey on there, that's beyond me, that one. But ju, just asking people, you know, let, let the community put some ideas forward, and then if there is a, a, a willingness for it, obviously there's gonna be a cost. That gets passed on to the public, doesn't it, let, let's see if it's something they want us to do, and if they don't, then we just nag at the county council, and so, you know, we've got a county councillor. Let's just say we want them bins, but we don't wanna pay for them.
We'll go to Dave, John and Tim, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, um, let's take the situation that, uh, that we're in at the moment. If we ever land off getting snow, a lot of ice here, um, the people here suffer big time, there's no doubt about it. The county council were probably last on their list to actually grit anything. And you only got to go in high street when it's not good, uh, when it's icy. Um, and it'd take about five days just to lay some salt or, or grit on the pavement. I think, uh, what Richard has just been saying, I think we need to look at the situation of. If we're going to do this, how many bins, and which, and, and, and the areas that we need them in. Secondly, we would need to find out how much the county council are gonna charge us. Considering that people already paid their, our tax. And thirdly, we need to know that if they're going to, who's going to actually, um, spread. The sand out of these bins everywhere, because up to now, the county council have done very, very little in the past. This is what worries me, we're doing another job, we're offering to do another job for the county council, but we've gotta pay. The people have got to pay. Um, so it needs clarification, Mr. Mayor, and I mean clarification. And it's right that we should find out all the relevant information first. So the town clerk can come back once, a little group have got together in different areas and say, this is where they particularly like the bins, like Richard was saying. Once we know the numbers of the bins, how it's gonna be implemented, how often is those bins going to be full up? Who's actually going to put the sand out? Is it just still going to be the county, uh, workman? If that is so, um, all we're doing is absolutely nothing, we're just paying out money. So I think we need to study this very carefully before the whole council makes a decision. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Just before I go to you, John, I'm gonna go to Sabrina.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I can answer some of those questions, um, essentially, the parish council does have powers to put grit bins out, so it's a contiguous power that. We can do in, in conjunction with the county council, so we are able to just do this if we wanted to, offering that without even going to the county council. Um, in terms of who will fill the bins, the county will come, if we order for them to come and fill, they will come and fill the bins for us, we will pay for that, obviously, as we would for any other contract that we would, um. Fill those bins by, um, and it's for the public to use, so they will go and get, bring, I don't know if you wanna bring a bucket or whatever, they bring, get some stuff out, and they'll put it wherever they need to put it. Um, it's not for us to do that, it's, it's just a public service, basically, it's there for them. Um, and if we, uh, well, when we get our town ranger, uh, reappointed, um, we can order stuff in and he can go and top up if we need. Uh, with some of the, we've got some free bags that we can have as well, so.
Can I come back there, Mr. Mayor, if you. Just before you do, uh, to give you some idea, usually I'm watching the wheelchair, I cut this on Brookhill Street. And if there's snow and ice is on those sides, she can't get out, and there are lots of other people, and it's that the same thing, on different hills, all the way through Stapleford. And having said that, will it strike back today?
Stapleford is quite a large place, it's got a lot of pavements and a lot of roads like Brookhill, um, obviously, um. Stapleford Lane, uh, we have so many areas, even the, even the High Street, um, those pavements are lethal. Where they got ice or snow on them. And if we're going to, if we're going to do this, um, I've gotta be honest about it, we're gonna need a lot of bins. And we'll need a lot of bins that need filling. So we, this has to be planned correctly before we go any further, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to John, Tim, then Richard, John.
Thank you for that, Sabrina, giving them the, what, what's, I think the idea is now, that I think we all know, right, that there's bins that haven't been filled up. Aren't used, and this, that and the other, now, as Richard pointed out earlier, let every, we're, we're all in different wards. Let's just get a rough idea, how many bins we need, what's what and what's this, and that must least in there, because you know as well as me, Jay. There ain't one on Brookhill Street, there ain't one on Lancaster, there ain't one on Cliff Hill. There is one on Cliff Hill, halfway up, but they're not where they should be. So let's just, between us all, let's just get a rough idea, at least again, we're protecting as residents. If we get a town ranger, fair play to him when it's freezing, minus whatever, he can go out there and, and, and do it in the right places at the right time. Because we've been moaning about this for years, we've got our chance again. And it's there, isn't it, let's just do it.
Right, we'll go for me, good self, up to Tim.
Are we biting off more than we can chew, Mr. Mayor? You know, we've got a, we've got a report earlier on saying exactly, exactly how overworked our, our very short staff are. Um, it, it appears to me that this is currently the county council's responsibility. I know that one of our county councillors hasn't changed, but we also have a new one who I, I would, I would hope would, would. would, would use that role to, to pick up on some of this. Is it necessary to burden the town council, who at the moment has no responsibility for it whatsoever, with an additional responsibility, when clearly we're already struggling with, with quite a lot? And, and so many things have been pushed back, I think it's, I think it's not, if this comes up every year, then, then maybe implement it next year, give, give an opportunity to catch up with ourselves.
We're going straight back to John because it's a right reply, John.
I can assure you, councillor Hallam, I will, but on my other point that I made earlier, right, this has been going on for years. Right, we haven't had no bins filled whatsoever, right, and nothing's ever been done. So there's an opportunity now for us to do something, I will do my utmost, get some funding from the county to help Stateford, but I'm sure that every county councillor at the county is being asked the same question. But this is the first time that something's been given to us and we've got the opportunity to do something like that. So if we're not the staff, let's employ some staff, that's all I say.
Thank you, and then we go to Richard and Bob.
Yeah, as we said, my proposal's still the same then, just to set up a little working group to see what could, it's like, we could even, you know, the working group could ask the businesses on the High Street if they want to contribute, because if each shop says, yeah, I'll buy a bag, and they'll chip in, you know what I mean, that doesn't cost the town council anything, it's, we're helping the businesses, aren't we, they, you know, we're getting it probably cheaper buying in bulk, so if someone wants a second my proposal, that we set up a little working group as, you know, a, a time and a place to suit whoever's.
Does anybody wish to second?
I'll second, actually.
Loads of seconds, so we'll go to John. Oh, John.
David.
David. Getting tired, my apologies.
Okay.
Right, so we've got suggestion and proposal second of, uh, um, setting up a working group of bins, I'll go to Bob quickly, and then we'll go to that.
Still, it's not quite resolved, as, as Tim and Dave said, should us the money, what does it cost, do we need to, do we need to go back, and the bins that are there already, uh, aren't they supposed to be filled?
They never have been bought, that's the argument.
But are, are they supposed to be filled?
Yeah.
Well, Richard, go to. Hands everywhere, do you want to come back to that one first, and then I'll go to Richard?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the price is in the report, it's at six point five, it's a fully filled bin, first time that you get it, so if there is no snow and ice, it will stay there until next year, and they won't need, so, yeah.
Right, Richard?
That's what I was going to say, the prices are actually in the report.
My apologies on my life, John.
Well, I don't remember if we're special on first drive, but we've already got a bin on first drive, so.
Is there any?
We don't need one on that drive, that's a good idea. Uh, Sue?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got a responsibility to our residents, whether it's county council's job or not, if I hear of an elderly person break, falling down and breaking their hip, and we have got the chance to do something, I think that's what we need to think about, really.
I'll just say this before I hand out the vote. When a person, like my Jackie, or somebody else on one of the other hills, can't get out when there's snow on the ground and ice for days at a time, when it could be easily sorted, it's solely strong form. And it's also worrying for us, the carers, when they come out on the boggy thinking, oh, but, because Brookhill Street is a long way down. But yes, um, right, we're going to go to the vote. All in favour with Richard's vote? All for Richard's proposal? All in favour? All against? Abstentions? Tostations?
Can I just come back on this, so we're going to have a working group, and we need to set it up soon, almost, you know, within the next few weeks.
Would I be able to make a suggestion, I know it's not on the agenda? Um, to basically see if anybody would be interested in?
Yeah, we don't have to have on the agenda to, to set those up, so, um, if we want to take nominations, because then we can just get.
Right, I'd like to do that, then, yes, please.
Can I just make a suggestion as well?
Yes.
Sorry. Surely, in our, the areas that we live, you know, each of us, we, we all live in different areas of Stapleford, and we can bring back, so.
I think that would be for the.
I think, personally, I think it's up to all of us.
Yeah.
Who wants it. Um, just bring in, you know, the ideas of, of where they should be put and how many we need.
Right, go to Sue, and then Richard, who's put his hand up?
Is there a closing date for this?
I think, I think there is, I'm quite sure it was, but I think it was in October sometime, so it's obviously in order. So I don't think we wanted to look at delegating authority to me to make the final decision, once we've got, um, the innovation crew, um, because we're going to more council meetings and more than that.
Richard?
As I say, if the town clerk can let us know what the closing date is, and then let us know, obviously, you need a bit of time to, to put it together, don't you? If you can let us know when you need that information in by then, and then any councillor that wants to submit something, that, that would probably work, wouldn't it better?
That all the councils bring in their reports to our working group, and then the working group passes over to Sabrina to make that.
You could even email them in, couldn't you, to save, save meeting up, like, like councillor Gordon just said, it might be quicker.
Mr Mayor, are we aware of, of costings and things for all this?
It's sold there, it's actually the report. It's a hundred and fifty-five pounds plus the eighty for a full bin to be delivered, um, inside. And then back to the salt. Um, the twenty kilo bags are five pounds plus the eighty, or there's a bulk, uh, you know, like a tonne bag that you get from builders merchants, and that's fifty-five pounds plus eighty. But we don't have anywhere to store those, they are open, so if it rains, the salt's just shod, so we'd need to do the bags if we're getting them.
Yes, on the cost side of it, um, although five pounds per kilo tea for a twenty kilogram bag I held this afternoon, um, is a good price, especially as it includes being delivered, uh, it is still a lot more expensive than buying, if that bag really is a tax, it's a nominal tonne. Um, it's, it's a lot more expensive than buying it like that, um, and the five, the five free bags won't go very far.
It's just a storage.
Yeah, anyway, I can see that, and the fundamental sensible would be if, and again, I get the impression, it says, says somewhere in the report, that they want to deliver it all to the same place, which means it would then be up to us, or somebody we, somebody we employ, to take, send all these bags to all the different, um, grit bins. And a grit bin would take, uh, sort of the ones I've seen, would probably take five of these twenty kilogram bags, a rough estimate.
Just get a tonne bag, Ross, get it, I've slit it, and it would straighten, straighten, mate. That's a fireman, there you should be, just get a tonne bag, split it, straight in the.
Richard?
Yeah, no, it's, it's always going to be cheaper to buy in bulk, isn't it, it's like you say, it's storage. May- maybe it could be something tied in with some kind of, because it's not going to be several times a year we're doing this, is it, it's going to be like a one-off thing, probably just before the winter, isn't it? So we could make an event of it, I don't know, a winter safety event or something, and come along and collect your bags while you're there, I don't know, and we could, I'm sure we can get some people to help deliver it for those that can't. There's enough, there's enough of us, you know, it might be an excuse to do like a winter safety event.
Well, what I suggest is we write in, we find out who would like them, where we need to put them, write email into the clerk, and then what have you found, so if you get what you need done.
I was just going to say, I've got an email, so it says, it should be noted to the orders receiver, that if I'm here, I'm not sure, we cannot guarantee a certain amount of people to be able to deliver these boxes, so it's not a deadline as such, but if we want.
And what was that date again? Okay, thank you.
Yes, but just one technical thing, is it, it's salt and grit, isn't it? Yes. Yeah. Salt to grit? Oh, I, I don't know. Um.
Sorry, what was it?
How much salt to brick? Salt to brick is, uh, in a tonne bag, for example, one to one, or?
I didn't believe that detail, I've no idea, they just take it in the bin.
I think it's salt and sand, and I think it's a measure from what I can remember, the best way to find out is to phone up builders merchant.
Can just come back on that, they just mine it out of the ground, so it's whatever that particular rock has, so. You know, it might end up like two percent salt, mine it up eight percent salt, so it really depends on what they get out, but the idea of the salt and the grit is, one's going to melt the ice, the one's going to give you traction, so, so you can walk or drive, so.
Thank you very much. Right, so we need to have a proper vote on delegation to let Sabrina do that, once we've got all the information through Sabrina, yes?
Yeah, I'm happy to propose that.
Have we got a second there? So you put your hand up first, though, you're in, uh, Teresa. Uh, all in favour?
Of.
Donating authority to me.
So then the information's over, it will literally be dealt with very quickly. Yeah, all in favour? All against? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Right. Uh, Sabrina, start, I think it's from yours, and now I can see you.
No, it's not Sabrina, please.
Sabrina, my apologies, I've got that one down now, I just want to keep on repeating.
We've been making a lot of things, we don't know, but this is a consultation that's come through, uh, from, uh, two ways to ask if we want to, um, put any views for our government on the approach to outlets of nature, and it could be a strategy. So basically, a lot of questions that are want answers to.
That's why we said, yeah.
And which. And the person that they most about is bringing stuff.
Yes.
I was going to ask if the town clerk could speak up a little, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a little weak, it's back here, obviously.
Sorry, I do apologise, so this is a consultation that, is that better, can you hear me?
Hi, thank you.
Uh, this is a consultation that's come through from NAWC, uh, which is, uh, the National Association Local Power for the Dusel and Lander. The government is consulting, uh, DAFRA is consulting about, um, local nature, um, recovery strategies. Uh, and so there's consultation that's come out, uh, with questions that look like answers to. Um, and so the idea is that we will put forward our thought on this, which will go to NAWC, who will then form their opinion as a government lobbying, uh, body, and then feed into the bill.
Yeah, sets out, okay, uh, yeah, it's just basically, do we want to formally respond to NAWC's call for evidence and opinions on it, so that they can, they're feeding to the bill. Um, they have actually done a lot of hard work for us by putting it all together into questions, so actually, it wouldn't be too hard to put together a, um, a response. Um, unless it's more of a working party thing, or I'm happy if, if people were on, just to say to them, if they've got the answers to these questions, I'd rather send them, and then we can, we can turn it around, if that's easier.
Do I force square into playing environment?
Um, yeah, we'll talk, we'll do, yeah, um, yeah, it could go to playing environment, put it together.
I think that'd be a good idea. So we push that forward to playing environment. Is that possible?
Well, any of us already, so you can react to it.
A second, please, second, that's twelve. Just look down on the capitals, let it go. All in favour? All against? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Well done, Bob. Right, another contentious one.
Yeah.
Number twelve. That was a rather evil update.
Well, if I may, Mr Mayor.
Can I just say what it is first?
Yeah.
Right. To consider allowing bonfires and allotments, and any rules that should be applied, Sabrina?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, so you mainly called that around about the time last year, we, uh, in relation to the, the COVID pandemic, uh, agreed that we would not allow bonfires because there were concerns over spiritual issues. We've had complaints before about this, bonfires have been done apart from one night of the year, uh, where we allow people to have them. Unfortunately, sometimes people go a little bit mad with those, and they are massive, very big bonfires, that create a lot of smoke and burn for days, uh, and cause lots of complaints to come into the council. Um, I have had some information back from, uh, another town council here, uh, they very kindly sent me, uh, with some advice from the Borough Council's environmental, um, health team as well. Um, and basically as a council, we need to be careful that, uh, whatever people are doing on our allotment sites, although we've, we've rented them to them, so they should be responsible, if it was deemed that there was statutory nuisance caused by a bonfire, um, then the, the Borough Council would be coming to us to take enforcement action against us. And of course, that would be part of balancing between those councils for that to have happened, uh, and they don't want to be put in that position, and I don't think we would want to be put in that position either. However, we know that people do love their bonfires, uh, and they want to have them, and they moan about this a lot, that they want to have them. I tell you, lots of queries, and people are always asking me, when are you deciding, can we do it this year? And the, the key thing that we've sort of gleaned from dealing with this, and talking to people about what is it really that you want him to burn? Um, and most allotment holders talk about, um, diseased plant material, so, um, there's things that they can't take to the tip, because they've got a disease which would burn first in the soil, if it was used as compost, it needs to be burnt, and then we use that then as potash to then put back on the allotment, because the disease has been dealt with. Um, and the tip weren't allowed to take the diseased plant material anyway. And that's not large amounts of, of stuff, uh, from what I understand. Um, there are also other options that we could look at for people, I know, um, Eastwood have been looking at, uh, what they've called hot composting. I don't know any detail about that, but essentially, people love it apparently on their site since it's been, uh, implemented, which has caused, um, them to not need to burn so much, uh, material. Um, and really, what we're looking at here is, it's woody waste that can't be composted quickly, that people need to get rid of. So we did mention in, uh, I think it was Finance Committee, uh, looking at getting a chipper, so that we could have a day where the town ranger goes with the chipper, and any wood waste that, um, people have got that can go in there, this is trees and plants here, away from that, obviously, the, uh, pallets or whatever that they've got there as well. Uh, that could be, um, a day where everybody can come, they can get the waste chipped, and then they can use that for paths or much or whatever on, uh, allotments. The issue is, uh, other waste which people are bringing to site, um, and possibly have inherited, if it holds sheds and things over there before, uh, those watching them and not being able to get rid of those. Um, and I think what we've looked at again with that is, can we just get a list of people that would take that waste for a charge probably, um, a properly licensed waste carrier, uh, to take that, for those people that haven't got a vehicle, or they don't want to put it in the vehicle, um, rather than bringing skips to site, which, as we know, were abused last time that we did that, and are very expensive to do. So there's quite a lot of options to look at here, um, one of the things that was mentioned was, people might like the small, I'm going to call it a lid adjusting, because that's what it looks like to me, it's just a, a, a top that we burn things in, and it's got a funnel on the top, um, so it's sort of controlled, it's making it go up rather than just traveling, uh, all round if it, if it needs it. Um, that's something that I think might be more acceptable to people, I think it's more reasonable, um, and it would be something that perhaps you would want to allow them to use when they wanted through the winter months, if, if they were going to allow those. Uh, so that we've not got a concentration of smoke on one day, essentially, because I think that's part of the issue. People are opening the windows and the house is just filled with smoke from some massive bonfires that's been set on, on allotments. Um, but obviously, it's up to council to decide what you want to do with the information that I've just sort of poured on you, um.
Right, we're going to go to Dave, Rich, Dan, then Tim, so we'll start off with Mr Latter himself, Dave.
Uh, I'll stand it up for a minute, if you don't mind, Mr Mayor.
No, it's all.
Mister, Mister Mayor, I've been made aware that this particular subject has been coming up with the council since nineteen ninety-three. And since I've been here since ninety, oh, twenty or whatever, oh, fiveish, um, then this has been a great burden for the council, the probably the biggest burden this council's ever had, to be honest. Now, obviously, everyone wants to keep the allotment holders happy, everybody wants to keep the people that live around, should we say, the allotments happy. But sometimes you've got to say to yourself, time to change. Obviously, Brockstow does not want Stapleford Town Council, or any area in Brockstow, to start having fires now on, on, on bonfires. Obviously, Brockstow does not want stable for town councils, or any area in Brockstow, to start having fires now on bonfires. There are two things here, one is when we used to have the fires, the majority of people used to keep their fires quite low. And then you get the idiot who'll come up and throw a mattress on, these sort of things happen. Now, obviously, we want to keep the allotment holders happy, and yes, things like those little burners that the town clerk was talking about, is a possibility that people could use one of those. To start getting skips and hiring skips and everything else, it's eventually, it's going to cost a lot more money, for the simple reason is that, at the moment, as you all know, I wouldn't have thought the pipes, shall we say, at Albany, underneath the ground, were that protected or that good. So there's money to be spent eventually by the town council, so you have to be careful how you're spending the money, because every penny that comes in on rent from allotments has to be spent on the allotments, and that's quite right. So you have to be careful. So if you've got those little burners that the town clerk was talking about, and that would be some sort of idea, because if you start spending a lot of money, a terrific amount of money on skips and things like that, we've got five allotments, haven't we? If you start spending money like that, you'll never be paying out. So I would do this on what I call the budget, get one of those random little burners, like they have, and people can burn as much as they like in it. To have a massive great bonfire on your allotment these days is a thing of the past, I'm afraid. But it's up to the council what they do, but be warned that whatever we do, you have to be careful of the spending, because as I've said, the water and pipes and things eventually will need to be repaired, you might have to have new ones, you've got to have the money there for it. Thanks, Geoff.
Thank you very much, and from one burning topic, we'll go over to Rich.
Yeah, so these burning bins, they don't last forever, and I mean, they're not expensive, they're cheap enough. We could perhaps get them cheaper if we bought them in bulk, and then offer them to the people on the allotments. But I haven't got an allotment, so I don't think it's fair for me to say, you know, to say what they can and can't do. We've got an allotments committee, and we've got a garden holders association. Would it be worth getting all those guys together pretty quickish, and having, you know, letting them fight it out kind of thing, and make some decisions and that? Because, you know, the garden holders know a hell of a lot more about gardening, I mean, I always say, I don't know the difference between planting a weed. You know, they're more qualified probably to make these decisions than, more certainly than myself.
This will be a knee jump.
Well, yeah, I mean, Jan's got a lovely allotment, if you haven't seen it. So, you know, there is some councillors that's got allotments that know what they're doing, I'm just, I'm definitely not one of them, so I just, I don't know, is that something that can be done, can them two groups be pulled together pretty quick?
Whatever he says, and then we'll come back to it.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Right, we've got to go to, give me a second, put my glasses back on. Jan, Tim, sorry, Dan, Tim and Jan, so Dan.
Yeah, just because we talk about fire, something I want to speak for, I've been listening to everyone else as well. When I believe the fire rescue services that advise people on having a fire, is plenty of space around it, make sure there's a means to extinguish it, make sure that you always attend that fire. I've been to quite a number of fires on allotments, where they've started off small, but because they've been tucked in the corner, because you don't want it in the middle of your allotment patch, suddenly it's spread to a hedge, it's spread to a bush. And they quite quickly escalate. Very few of them remain attended, so normally we get called out to quite late at night or very early in the morning. And almost all of them never have a means to extinguish that particular fire as well. So I think if we're going to come back to a liability from that, I don't see how we could support having fires, especially when there are other means to get rid of this waste. You know, when we're looking at sort of trying to protect the environment and be greener, you know, encouraging people to have fires doesn't, doesn't sit particularly comfortably.
Thanks. Glad Richard mentioned about the allotment holders, and I think it's a steering group, isn't it, from this council, rather than a committee, so that it can include members of the public, allotment holders association, and other interested parties. I was really, really disappointed with myself, Mr Mayor, at finance and general purposes, because I was a part of the group there that made a load of decisions on the allotments contracts, the incoming allotments contracts, knowing nothing about it. You know, I touched a growing thing and it turned into a robot, that's my expertise as engineering, not horticulture. And so, and I wasn't qualified to make that decision, I assumed that it had been, that it had gone to consultation with people that actually, you know, would be affected by these contracts. If it did go to consultation or to a steering group, I don't think it was very extensively carried out, because I know that a lot of councillors, got a lot of very angry people contacting them when that news hit their entrays. So I would say, I'm certainly not in a position to make a call on this. I would completely support, Richard, if it was a recommendation, to take it to the steering group.
Right, I just have to go to Sabrina, then I'll go to you, Jan.
Sorry, I just think it's important that council does know that this topic, we're just talking about fires at this point, but this topic has been discussed extensively at the allotment steering group, we talk to allotment holders all the time about fires. So we know that a lot of people want them, and a lot of people aren't bothered. And so I think we don't need more consultation, we just need a decision, that's what they want from us, is a decision, what's going to happen. A lot of those that contacted want us to say, yes, you can have bonfires, that is the feedback that we've got. I don't think we need to keep going on and on about it, we need to make a decision for the people that this affects.
In that case, then, Jan, we're the last person, and then we'll go to the decision, Mr Jan.
Well, I don't like fires on allotments, and I've had my allotment quite a long time, and I think Richard can testify that it's in...
The food tastes nice.
But it's neat, it's tidy, and I take a lot of my rubbish away from my brown bin at home. If, we can't pass it again, we tried that, and it was an expensive, fast, really. People took advantage, and it was wrong. It wasn't a wrong decision, it was the way people behaved. There is, I must assure you, that there is water on all the allotment sites, so that does put out fire, as you well know. So we don't have big extinguishers everywhere, we do have water there.
Apart from it's turned off in the winter, is it not?
Sorry?
It's turned off in the autumn and winter.
I'm sorry, you reminded me of that, yes it is, so we mustn't have a fire during the autumn. The idea of the little bins, are you suggesting that the council provide those to the allotment holders? Or are you suggesting that the allotment holders are responsible for them themselves, they buy them themselves? That's...
Yes, I would recommend that we buy them, I don't know how much it costs.
No, no, I didn't think you were, and I would have had a tantrum if you'd said, yes, we are going to buy them, because that's taxpayers' money.
They're kind of rusey, aren't they?
And you obviously need more than one on the allotment site, you'd need several. You would have to have a written protocol for the use of them. And everybody would have to adhere to that protocol, because as you said, sorry, I forgot my name.
Dan.
Dan, I cannot forget that, Dan Dan the fireman. Yeah, as Dan was saying, you know, you have to be very careful.
Yes.
So we would need a written protocol. And I think that's, apart from taking it away, as I do, I've never had a fire, I've never had one fire on my side, and I've had it for eight, nine years. It isn't essential, they just like to have the fires. You know, it's a big occasion on, you know, on laying an allotment, that one night. But if we can't have them, then I suggest we have these little braziers or something like that, but with a proper protocol.
I mean, the braziers themselves, I tend to use them, but I dig everything back into the garden for the compost.
Yeah.
They do get very, very hot, and you can actually burn yourself on a glass of tea level.
Again, you see, this is all the danger, isn't it?
Well, I'm going to pass straight over, I know that we're going to go to a valid poll, Theresa.
It's interesting that you said about, you know, that there is a water supply that's off, you know, off past the year. We're talking about, you know, a small brazier, we could define the size of it, and if we give a window when in the autumn when they can be used, could we arrange for the water to be on for those two weeks or whatever it was?
Well, it's the council that turns the water off. So we...
Is it us that does that?
Yeah. So that could be, if we had a protocol.
Yeah.
But that would be, it is essential that we have that, and that people follow the protocols. But yeah, if the water does go off, it goes off in winter, it comes back on again in the spring.
So I'm going to go to you, and then I'm going to go to Robert.
I mean, can we have a trial run for a year with a small braziers? You know, because we tried the skips and they were abused. If we tried this, after this winter, to see how it went, and then review it again in a year's time.
I think it's got to be constantly reviewed. If it's quick.
Can I make those up?
Yes.
Sort of got this down, allotment holders can use small fire bins, define that better, to dispose of diseased plants and persistent weeds, when attended, from, put the dates in, where there is a means of extinguishing them available.
So is that your proposal?
Sort of, there's bits need filling in.
Can we remove the date? Can we remove the date? Why does that have to happen at this time of year, if people have got a safe and personal means of disposing of stuff in that way? Sorry?
The extinguisher.
Yeah, I think it's just people have the windows open during the summer, so we're trying to cause less nuisance, you know.
But perhaps if it's a trial, the allotment holders can use small fire bins to dispose of diseased plants and persistent weeds, as long as those fires are attended, and there is a means of extinguishing them, so you have to move them.
Between the months of October and February, which is, which is winter.
Yeah.
But the reason the water is switched off during those months as well is because it could freeze. And then you, you know, you have problems.
Burst pipes, which we can't afford to fix, probably.
If it was spread through the year, I was thinking for a night, that would reduce the nuisance of the smoke. And if we were getting complaints still about the smoke, then we could have it in a year's time.
I was just going to say, obviously, it's when it rains, people do have water box, and we do have water box under the town on a lot of sites as well. So people just need a bucket of water upon one of those to, if they're, if they don't need the taps, she are...
Before I go to Dave, I'm going to ask Jan, because she'll look at it like this.
Mr Mayor.
Can I just say something for today's aim, please, then it will be straight over to you. It is relevant.
Relevant.
Relevant. When is historical time for burning in the allotments?
Well, that's been decided by the council, and it's usually November, and it's one day in November, it's usually November the fourth or something like that, very near bonfire night.
I mean, if we look at that and just put a week out aside, then you've given that a little bit more, and then after that, it's closed. Because we can't have this going through all the time, because it's going to annoy people in the summer, and you've got to wash it out, and somebody in the allotment burns it. Not the washing, the fire. We'll go straight over to you, good stuff.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, our councillor's rule is quite correct, it's the nearest Saturday to bonfire night.
Yep.
That's the only day that we're allowed over the years for people to actually burn anything. Secondly is, we have to be careful regarding the water, because yes, the water is turned off, and obviously, it doesn't come back on until March or April time, but the simple reason is, as I said earlier, the pipes are not brilliant, so they couldn't take a very cold winter. But there again, if you've got people with little fires, then obviously, you're going to have to have some water on tap. This, this, this particular problem has come up nearly every year, as I said, since two thousand and whatever. The point about this is, this council's got to make its own mind up once and for all this year, what they're actually going to do about it and keep to it, because I don't know how many hours have been spent in the last twenty years talking about this. So we really have to make a decision, a real good decision, and keep to it. Because if we don't, you'll be fined, and we'll all be standing there again here next year.
Thank you very much, and I'll go to Pip, then I'll go to Ross.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For those who are gardeners or allotment holders, what is the best time of year? When is there a propensity for these, well, for wanting to get rid of diseased crops or, you know, blighted, I think it's potato blight and stuff like that, is it not? When, when, what time of year would that be?
Well, it would be about this time, this time of year, because the harvest is all over.
Kind of guess that that might be the case.
So it would be this time of year, when people want to get rid of the stuff, but it, it, I know it's a conundrum and everything like that about these bonfires, but it's not, you know, it's not that difficult to actually take your stuff away with you, which is what I do. Most allotment holders have vehicles, and you know, I bag it up and I take it back, and I put it in my brown bin and things like that. So there are other alternatives, but it just seems to be that it's been a traditional thing for allotment holders to have these bonfires.
But that's what I'm trying to establish, whether the difficulty with bonfires happens because people associate it with too much with bonfire night, and turn it into a party, hence my question about when is the...
When is it appropriate?
Yeah, in practical, in practical terms, when is the necessity to have the braziers and disassociate it with bonfire night, unless there's a problem? But I have heard, I understand what you're saying, but, no, I have heard a couple of, more than a few people have said, it's, that they miss the opportunity to, or when fires, I shouldn't call them bonfires, when fires were banned, what are we going to do with the blighted crops? It seems to be an issue, but the council's issue seems to be more about, we don't want bonfires. So why are we calling them bonfires, why are we proposing that that should happen around about November, if that's causing the problem? Disassociate the two, I say, and allow for the braziers, don't call them bonfires, don't have it round about November, and that's a practical solution. Seems both parties...
I was going to say, that's a sensible solution, because both parties are then happy, the council.
I would hope so, we could try that, yeah.
I'll go to Ross, and then we'll finish up with Ross.
I'm trying to reword it. I think I've got some here, but apart from the date.
Right, I'll go to Tim, and then I'll come back to you.
The, completely agree with disassociating it with bonfire night, it's... I would still say, let's not, let's not date limit this, because I'm thinking about it. If you assume that everybody's saving up their waste that needs burning, and let's assume that they've got no other means of getting rid of that, whether it be personal circumstances, blighted crops, whatever, they're going to burn it. Do you want it sitting, getting musty, mouldy, rubbish in the bottom of a bin, and then burn it? This is going to create more of an issue within a narrow window of time than if people, than if people do the burning, spread out in small doses over the year, and then I don't think there will be a problem with people's, let's put it this way, in the summer, people are more likely to have their washing stinking of barbecue than they are a bonfire. Let's be absolutely honest about this. So I completely agree with Ross's suggestion, I agree with Mum's suggestion to disassociate it with bonfire night, and I would go one further and say, let's just allow people to manage their own processes by not locking it down to a specific time of year.
Ross.
So what I've got here then is my proposal that allotment holders can use small attended braziers to dispose of... to dispose of diseased plants and persistent weeds with a means of extinguishing available.
Okay.
On a one-year trial.
Put a date to it or not?
Don't tell them that.
Or review.
To be reviewed after 12 months.
To be reviewed, but bear in mind that the residents are going to go out and buy these braziers. And I think it would be dreadfully unfair to say, go out and spend money, but we might pull the plug next year. So I think David's right with what he said earlier, we've got to be a bit committed.
Yeah, I've got two in my board and they're much smaller.
I have one a long time ago.
Mr. Mayor, you could go round all night like this. Every meeting John and I have been to over the last thirty, twenty odd years, it's the same thing.
And like Tim says, just let them use your own common sense and burn all the way through.
Right.
It's up to them then.
And a second, there was no Dave.
Shall we know what we're voting for then?
Yep.
On, not voting on. Allotment holders can use small attended braziers to dispose of diseased plants and persistent weeds with a means of extinguishing out of control fires available. And then to be reviewed in a year.
Just put...
To be reviewed.
To be reviewed, don't put the timestamp on it.
Making sure you put no bonfires, right? Make sure you've got that then, Mr. Mayor.
Smaller tender braziers implies that, David.
Yeah, well, people...
Right.
Shall I send this to you?
We need to vote on this now.
Four.
We'll go round and round again. So all in favour? All against?
What that light on?
Ostensions?
Unanimous.
But very well speaking out.
Well, Dan's is from a professional point of view, isn't he? We'll pay his overtime if he has to keep going.
Can you put in the minutes that it was unanimously voted as well? Because then that shows strong...
It was as you want.
Oh, sorry, well, firemen, I know, I can't argue with firemen, sorry.
Then argue.
I didn't see that.
Smash your head in.
I don't know about that, it's got a big fire engine.
Right.
Quarter past nine, nearly time to pour.
Okey dokey.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I hate to be rude, but councillor Hallam and councillor Hallam, both of us are going to make our apologies now and disappear because Jess needs to go to work and I need to get her to work, so thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night, Tim. Good night, Jess.
Bye, Jess. Bye, Tim.
Mind your coke if you get back quick. Have a good shift.
Right. Done. We're on to thirteen, adoption of H R policies. And we'll go straight up to the chairman.
Thanks, I must apologize, I mislabeled the first one, I got myself confused. The fourth, Supreme Policy and Procedure is not what that is, that you've got attached to papers. It's a staff appraisal of policy and form and procedure. They were attended through to, from the E C A committee in Vanuatu. It was such a, the things that were just had going on, it's been skipped over, which is formally approved these. The E C A committees were happy with them, it had been reviewed multiple times. So it's just been counted to be formally accepted for policies.
Can I ask for somebody to propose these?
Well, Ross puts his hand up first.
All right, you can propose, or your seconded, because he'd be... Sorry, Richard.
No, I don't mind, long somebody does.
Right, two come on this time, I'm doing one. All in favour? Actually unanimous. Thank you very much. Sickness and obsessive policies, is that next? Okay, done about.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing anyway.
Right, someone is going to make a suggestion for number fourteen. We have an election at the end of the month. I wish to push back fourteen until the next meeting. So it gives a fair chance for whoever's elected to actually, if they want to come on to it, to come on to the committee. So can I have a proposal for that?
Sorry, good to hear.
Seconded, Richard.
No, I just want to say, I also think it's very kind that you've done that as well.
Well, it's what we did last time.
Yeah, no, it's fair that you've done that.
So all in favour?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Thank you. Right, exclusion of present public...